The fifteenth and happy belated Valentine's Day. I hope all of you did the right thing and treated the ones that you love with a special something yesterday, and if you didn't, today will be good enough.
You'll be in trouble, though.
You'll be in trouble. With that, let us go into our meeting with the Chaplain Prayer and pledges, and we have, oh, we, uh, who do I have today doing that? Come forward. I'm looking at many faces here. Please come forward.
Good morning, everyone. Let's pray. Father, thank you for the opportunity to invoke your word through prayer into this gathering of city officials, leaders, and concerned citizens. You said that we should pray for those that are in authority in this city. So first, I pray for the mayor and her staff and assistants, the city council members, the city manager, and every person in department that is instrumental in leading and directing our city. Heavenly Father, I pray for the city leaders, as you have given them the responsibility to watch and guide over our city, that they serve. And Lord, just as you made the prophet Ezekiel to be a watchman over the people of Israel, I pray that these city leaders, that they will be godly watchmen and watchwomen over our community, neighborhoods, and businesses. I pray that you would bless them to work together in unity to tackle the items that are on the agenda today. I pray that you would give them godly wisdom, directions, and instructions on how to lead, manage, and operate this city and all of its departments. Give these servant leaders knowledge, wisdom, and courage to make the tough decisions, oh God, and how to deal with the communities and families, the facilities, businesses, and any other problems and issues facing our city and its people. We ask these blessings upon your people that you have called to lead this community. And then lastly, Lord, I pray for the chief of police, the entire police force, the sheriff's department, that they would continue to protect and serve the residents of our city. And I pray for the fire chief and the fire department and all the first responders who serve our city. And lastly, I pray that you would bless our city with economic prosperity. May you draw in and attract to our city industries, businesses, and corporations that will produce jobs and revenue and help it to progress and grow. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
We will now move into the public comment section of the agenda today. Do we have individuals who would like to offer some public comment today? Counting down, one, two, three. No public comment. Thank you. I want to start by offering some comments myself, and so I want to say, I want to thank all of those individuals who have pulled together to create the coalition for the sanctuary city. We have, without hesitation and without limitation, listened to all of you, and some of you multiple times. It is an emotional issue, and many have shared very personal stories that make this issue even more dear to your life. I believe most of you believe in the democratic process that we use. We have listened to you. We have listened to our legal counsel, and we have then taken a vote on next steps forward. We have not, I have not worked behind the scenes to get the outcome that I want. I have used the legal system to get a direction, meaning a vote of the council. That vote was not what many of you wanted. The timeframe might not be what many of you wanted. These council members sitting up here with me today are strong, good leaders who have been elected by all of you, and they have their own opinions about what they believe is the right path forward, and we have taken that vote. We did not meet, I did not meet to predetermine our course of action or vote. I have said, repeated it from the very beginning, when Mr. Mark Dixon showed up at my restaurant to have a discussion with me. I said to him then, and I say it again, I want the voters, our citizens, to have an opportunity to vote on the issue, just like they did in Lubbock. I have said from the beginning, the citizens vote and determine what they want for their city. The process was used when the smoking ban became an issue, the same process we voted to use on the sanctuary city issue. What is so wrong with letting the citizens vote? You believe, those of you sitting here today or in the prior meetings, have a right to speak for all of the citizens? We have elections for a reason, to allow our citizens to express their support for candidates or issues. I believe most of you support the democratic way. We have not had an abortion clinic in this city for over a decade. Planned Parenthood does not exist in this city. The Texas legislatures have passed the Heartbeat Act. Abortion has dropped dramatically in this state. We have voted on a path forward for this city, for all of our citizens, not just the ones who have spoken or have been present at our meetings. I have heard from many, many people who want the democratic process to work and want an opportunity to be a part of the process to determine if they, their city, not just your city, to be a sanctuary city. And your council members have voted, not behind closed doors, but publicly in a city council meeting. I nor they have not, have not violated the Texas Open Meetings Act. What I have said, I have said publicly from the very beginning. Our city clerk and city attorney have been present at every meeting to make sure we follow all the legal procedures so that we don't violate any Texas rules. When advised to take a poll vote, we have done so. With that said, I want to thank the Sanctuary City Coalition for the time and effort in getting organized and getting the necessary signatures. We have voted to have a November election. We, sorry, we, a public hearing first, and then with that public hearing, we will move forward with the correct process.
Mayor Gunter, would you like me to clarify the next steps in the process?
I think you should.
Okay. After the public hearing on March 1st, the council will make a vote on how to proceed. You can decide to adopt the ordinance as presented. You can decide to amend the ordinance, or you can reject the ordinance. At that point, the initiating committee has 20 days to send me a statement that states how they would like to move forward after your decision, and following that is when we would call an election. Based on the state's timeframes and their requirements for holding this election at one of our uniform election dates, it would be the first Tuesday of November at the earliest.
Are we all clear on the process? Thank you. We will now move, is there any further public comment? With none, we will move into the old business consent agenda. I will start with Larry. Is there an item that you would like polled? Pollled? Lucy?
No, ma'am.
Harry?
No, ma'am.
Tom?
No, ma'am.
Tommy?
No, ma'am.
Then may I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So move.
A second, please?
Second.
And a second by Tommy Hebert. Is there any public comment on any of the items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All in, did you have something to say, Julia? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? With none opposed, the motion passes six zero. Consent agenda is approved. We will now administer an oath of office for our single-member District Five, and we will have a presentation of certificate of election. Would Karen Hesse-Smith please come forward?
Karen, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Karen Hesse-Smith.
I, Karen Hesse-Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
San Angelo City Council.
San Angelo City Council.
Single-member District Five.
Single-member District Five.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the warm welcome. I acknowledge the council members and city employees also present. It's a privilege to have been elected to serve single-member District Five. Gratitude must first be given, this is where I cry, to my inspiring mother, Barbara Hesse, who embodies what it means to live a life in service to a city that she loves. I further recognize my husband and daughter for their love, support, and patience. It was certainly not the typical holiday season this year. In this process, I have discovered a diverse and incredible group of people who are dedicated to having the best for this district and for this city. Many of them worked tirelessly to help me arrive at this moment. This is very much their victory, too. It's also a testament to teamwork. I'm honored by their conviction that I can serve as their voice. I take that responsibility very seriously. I will work for the neighborhoods of SMD Five and for the greater vision of what San Angelo can become when good people work together. I blame the tears on my mother. I can't help it. She's a legend, and I'm so glad that she's here.
We will now have a reception on the second floor to welcome Karen to city council. So at this point, any of you who would like to join and personally congratulate Karen, please join us on the second floor. Let's go. Your agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and opponents are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Item A is consider awarding the falling contractors based upon scoring criteria set forth in the competitive sealed proposal procurement method and authorize the city manager to negotiate scope and contract pricing to be brought back for future city council consideration. One, RFP WU-05-22 Hickory New Production Wells to Hydro Resources Mid-Continent Incorporated. Two, RFP WU-06-22 Hickory Treatment Plant and Well Field Improvements to PLW Waterworks LLC. And Allison, we have you on for the presentation.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Allison Strube, Director of Water Utilities. So just a brief recap of the Hickory Expansion Project. We developed this groundwater project a little over 10 years ago. This project or this expansion project will be drilling five additional wells. Currently, there are 15. This will have 20 wells total for the city of San Angelo following this expansion. It involves increased pump station capacity. The pump station is located at the well field or at the Ford Ranch in Melvin, Texas, as well as increased treatment capacity here in town at our groundwater treatment facility, which is what you see in the picture on the left of the screen. This will take the entire groundwater system from eight million gallons of produ, uh, production and treatment to 12 million gallons. In addition, there will be two new two-and-a-half-million-gallon Clearwells constructed as a part of this project. The Clearwells are what is the final chlorination, basically, holding tank before the water is pumped out to the entire distribution system. So the Clearwells receive both surface water and groundwater. It is whatever we have treated that day to be sent out to the distribution system. Currently, our Clearwells, I think the concrete stamp in them is 1947, and they have deteriorated since that time. But what we currently have is just one large five-million-gallon Clearwell, and so the ability to perform maintenance and operational activities on that Clearwell are very limited, basically, down to the winter months when we are on very low flow. In the summer months, we cannot operate or take the Clearwell offline to do any sort of maintenance. Having two two-and-a-half-million-gallon Clearwells will allow for that flexibility, allow one to be taken offline while one is still in operation, and so it allows or provides that flexibility and new concrete integrity and those type of things. We went with this expansion project through a competitive sealed proposal procurement. So typically, the city puts out just a RFB, so it is a bid-based proposal or bid-based procurement. Low bid usually wins the award. This one, I'll go through the details of it, but we put out two RFPs, so it is a proposal-based. One is for the new production wells, which is just the drilling part of it, and then the Hickory Treatment Plant and Well Field Improvements is everything else. So it is dropping the pumps down in the holes that these drillers will drill, equipping the, the pads themselves, the well station sites, all the interconnecting pipeline out at the Hickory Well Field, and then the new treatment system, Clearwells. It's, it's everything but drilling. Okay, so I want to walk through this competitive sealed proposal procurement and why it provides the best value to the city of San Angelo. So as you can see, there were six different components that made up these proposals. Price and completion time, obviously, was the heaviest weighted item at 35 percent. Current and completed projects and references were 30 percent weight. Project management ability was 20 percent. And then financial stability, subcontractors, and safety record all played 5 percent of each of these proposals. So with that, W0522, which is the new production wells, we had two respondents to this proposal. Hydro Resources Mid-Continent Incorporated, they scored 94 points, and then there was Weisinger Incorporated, which scored 73 percent. The biggest point discrepancy that you will see here, and was in, provided in the background documents, is the price and completion time. Weisinger's price was approximately 75 percent higher than Hydro's, so therefore, they got a 75 percent reduction in those points, and then that was the 35-point bracket there. Let me make sure I'm not forgetting. Hydro lost five percent, or five points in their category. There was one reference saying that they had a complaint about shifting project managers. However, the drilling personnel performed well and made up for that difficulty. Our sub, or our consultants have also worked with Hydro, and they've had a very good record and very good working relationship with them. And then both contractors lost one point in safety record because they had average to below-average safety records, but nothing out of the normal.
Safety's not out of the normal.
Below is not out of the normal.
Average. We'll go with average.
Average might be the good word.
If you have great safety, you get a five. Let me rephrase that, sorry. Okay, so the next contract was W0622 Treatment Plant and Well Field Improvements, and like I said, this is everything except for the drilling. So this involves work out in Melvin. It involves work here in town. So PLW Waterworks scored 100 points, and Keystone Construction scored 96 percent, or 96 points. But both of these, you can see, are a lot closer because, obviously, the pricing side that holds the largest weight, Keystone was only seven-and-a-half percent versus 75 percent in the other one, higher than PLW Waterworks. And then Keystone lost one additional point for their safety record being averaged. PLW Waterworks had a very good safety record. So with that, we are not asking for award of any sort of contract amount. What we're asking for is for the city manager to be able to negotiate scope and contract price to be brought back to city council, but we would go to these two highest-scoring vendors, Hydro Resources for the new production wells, and PLW Waterworks for the Hickory Treatment Plant and Well Field Improvements, that we can go start those negotiations and then bring back that needed information to proceed with a contract with both, both vendors. And I'll be happy to answer any questions y'all have.
Are there questions for Allison on this information and proposal? Okay, seeing none, then may I have a motion to allow for the city manager to negotiate and work through the details of this project and create a contract with.
To approve.
Okay, Lucy has made, made a motion to approve, and Larry has seconded that motion. Is there public comment from anyone? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All of those in favor of the motion on the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any noes? With no noes, the motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
We'll move into item B, Consider Awarding RFB ES-01-22 College Hills Boulevard. Reconstruction to Reese Albert in the amount of 32,661,071 and 98 cents. Guess we don't add the two cents. Including, and I want to make sure we watch that, including 1,500,000 in contingencies, utilizing 4,824,660 of fund balance from the Water Reclamation Capital Fund and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Shane, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Glad to be here with you this morning. Long awaited for many folks here in town is the reconstruction of redevelopment of the College Hills Boulevard. All the way, the project limits of this are from Loop 306 all the way up to Avenue N. It's approximately 1.8 miles of roadway or a little over seven miles of, lane miles of roadway. So quite a large project, as this is one of our arterial, minor arterials here in town, and so it, it moves a lot of traffic and people. People have been, been wanting this project for a long, long time.
I think with the exception of Bell Street, we've, this particular street has received most negative comments over the years, so I think the audience should be applauding that we're sitting here talking about it today.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, and we're, and we're proud, we're proud to finally get this project put together and brought before y'all as well, too. With that, as we're looking at this, you know, when we look at the project limits as well, and we, and we talk about the, the, the large number for this, which is the largest street project we've, we've ever brought before council, but when we look at this, this also includes sewer line replacement, water line replacement, new underground storm sewer drainage systems as well, which will be from the 306 all the way to the southern branch of the Arroyo there, as you can see, and so we will be putting a lot of underground drainage in there. And then, of course, as, as what everybody will see will be the new pavement, new pavement, sidewalks, curb and gutter, all along the entire stretch of the roadway as well, too. There will, we will be widening, widening the roadway to meet its arterial standard in some places. When it was originally constructed, it was constructed less than the arterial standard at the time, but we will be widening those out to bring it up to its, to its full arterial standard in those places. As we look at the breakdown on this, just so, again, everybody kind of knows where the money is coming from, which, which funds the money's coming from, and how we're going to pay for, pay for this project. We have the sewer utility at a little over 10 million, water utility a little over 3 million, the drainage and infrastructure 8.5 million, and that is from the federal ARPA grant that we received. And then we have for the paving.
And also remember, not only received, but approved by council to use those funds.
Correct, and, and council did authorize the use of those funds specifically for this project. And of course, those ARPA funds are, you know, specifically tied to specific public works functions that they can only, they can only be used on those functions, and so this was, this was one of the qualifying functions that we could use the grant funds on. And then, of course, the, the paving and the pavement marking signage, sidewalks, signals will be coming out of the street bonds funds at almost 11 million, 10.9 million there, so with a total of 32,661,091 and 98 cents. We have, with this, we also have to, to, for the sewer portion of it, to get the 10 million that we need to fund the sewer portion of it, we are going to have to do a budget amendment for that, and so this is how the budget amendment will break out, using existing 22 water reclamation, the capital budget that we have already set aside in, in one fund. We have the water reclamation operating budget in another fund, and then we will need to pull up some fund balance out of our 520 water reclamation fund for the total expense of 10,61,000, oh, no, 600, I can't say that number.
193.
Yeah, a little over $10 million for the total project expense, so, and, and as we wrap that up, so this is where we will, again, be funding that project from. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that y'all may have about the project.
I think the first question that everyone would have is, number one, when does it start? And when will it finish?
We, this, it'll take us about, probably about 90 days to get all the paperwork completed and, and issue a notice to proceed. This project is scheduled for a 300-day, roughly a 30-month construction period, so it will take quite some time to complete. We will be working, if y'all award this today, we will be working with Reese Albert on the, on the scheduling aspect of it and also the phase, phasing of it to try to hopefully minimize impact as best we can. Of course, on that southern portion of the project, like I showed you a while ago, with the stormwater portion from the loop all the way up to the southern fork of the Red Arroyo, will take the longest and will have probably the, the most.
Interruption.
Interruption of, of traffic and movements and flows that, that will be there for the longest period of time, and so, but again, all new utilities from one end to the other as well, too. The utility work, you'll see the utility work start first, and then from there, we'll start, start back on the road construction, along with curbs, gutters, sidewalks, replacing driveways, those type of things.
And you will be value engineering this, correct?
Correct.
So you will look for areas.
We will, we will. We have, we have, we will be going forward with Reese Albert after this meeting, and if y'all award this today, we will be sitting down with Reese Albert to see. We've believed that there may be some areas that we can reduce the budget in this, and if we are able to find those areas where we can value engineer some of the dollars down and, and hopefully find some ways to save, save some money, we'll bring that back to y'all in the form of a budget amendment at a later date. And so, but again, we, we feel really good about the project. We think it's, of course, well-needed, well-deserved, and, and staff, again, recommends approval, so, again, we're just, we're proud to bring this to you. I know everybody's been waiting for it for a long, long time.
Are there questions? Tom?
How much is this going to be concrete versus asphalt?
This is all, this is going to be all asphalt at this point. Now, when we say that, this is going to be, of course, we all like concrete, you know, especially from our, our point of view, from the maintenance aspect of it, but we bid it out in three phases, the traditional HMAC, hot-mixed asphalt, you know, that's our traditional roadways. We bid it out in traditional concrete, paving, and then also with roller-compacted concrete. The price differences between the HMAC and the, and the concrete, just the traditional concrete was a, there was an additional $4 million added to the price tag for that. And right now, we, I don't know where to go find an extra $4 million from, so it was one of those things that we had to evaluate it very closely, but we do, within the, the new structure of the pavement here, it's a very robust build. We're looking at stable, either lime or cement stabilizing the subbase, and then 12 inches of base. We'll have. We'll have three inches of type B hot mix and then two inches of type D hot mix on top of that. So it'll be a very robust roadway when we get through with it.
And then hopefully there's not many trucks on this route we're looking at, so understand that. But I mean, we talked about certain intersections, if you could get them to concrete, they go forty years.
Yep.
Other questions? Yes, Karen?
Yes, I have a question. This, this has a large impact on my district and I realize I'm swimming upstream. First, as a disclaimer, let me say I know that this is a very important and needed project and it was extremely important to my predecessor who's with us here today. Thank you for being here. I would simply ask for a very brief delay on a final, final vote so that I could meet with you personally and review the bid specs so that I understand it completely before I vote for thirty-two million dollar expenditure for the people that I represent.
We will not, we will take, we will ask for a motion and move forward based off a council's wish, but we need this project to move forward.
I absolutely understand that and agree with you. I just would like to be feeling a little bit more comfortable, my understanding of the scope of project.
He'll be glad to go through all the details with you and to answering your questions and thoughts on it.
That would be great.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, counsel, I'm just, we'll, I'll, I'll visit with you after the meeting and, and give you my contact information and I'll be glad to sit down with you.
I appreciate that and I won't waste your time. We'll go quickly.
No, that's fine.
I promise.
Any other questions or comments? With none, may I ask for a motion to approve as presented? With that, is there any public comment?
Lane Carter, District Five. I want to, the mayor is right, I think everybody needs to applaud this. We've been waiting for this for a long time. There has been a lot that has gone into the drainage studies over the years. I ran my council campaign six years ago for one of these reasons, which is this street. I am glad that it is going through. I thank every single one of y'all for what the efforts that y'all have done. Shane, you were going to hear it, you know, but yes, I wish I was up there with y'all to, to vote aye, but if that means anything, then I vote aye for this and thank y'all for everything.
Thank you, Lane. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All in favor of approving as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
I think I'm opposed.
Okay, motion passes six one. Item C, Consider Approving An Agreement With Rust Street Ministries For The Construction, Use And Maintenance Of A Small Parking Area On The Southeast Corner Of The Fort Conshul Property And Authorizing The City Manager To Negotiate And Execute All Related Documents. Bob, you're on.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Our neighbors at Rust Street Ministries need a little land to relieve some parking and traffic congestion. The Fort Board has endorsed a proposal to allow them to have a twenty by one hundred and fifty foot section that's on our eastern end. The city attorney advises that the best way to do this is with a forty-year lease, which the board has also approved. So we seek your approval to move forward conceptually. The city attorney will craft a lease agreement that will, I presume, be brought back to council.
Approval of this would authorize the lease agreement?
Ah, so we'll save you a step. Fort staff have reviewed the land piece in question and we don't believe there are any archaeological or historical issues, but we will run this by the Texas Historical Commission as we are required and a preliminary assessment shows that there shouldn't be any issues. The Rust Street would assume all costs of any improvements to that land pending the lease agreement.
What would the improvements be?
Just extending their existing parking lot twenty feet to the west and a hundred and fifty feet north and south.
And the current parking lot is in good condition?
It is.
All right. Do I have questions for Bob from any of council?
Approval is presented, Mayor.
Thank you, Tommy. Second by Harry. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Item D, Consider Resolution Allowing The Adjacent Property Owner To Remove A Tree In The Public Right-of-Way Adjacent To Three Three Seven West Two-Wig Avenue Per Section Seven Point Oh Two Point Oh Three Five Of The City Code Of Ordinances. And John, you're on.
Thank you. John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. This item, as you mentioned, is to remove a tree in the downtown. You can see the location there, the tree to be removed is closer to the corner. They're still going to replace that with a, a new tree in the public right-of-way along the streetscape, but just moving it back a little bit.
What size of tree would be replaced?
I would defer to the applicant on that. I don't believe we have included a specific size of planting.
We need to.
But if that's your intent, that can be added to the requirements. So here you can see up close to the corner is the existing tree. The applicant has provided some information in your packet about the health of that tree and the reason that it needs to come down. I'm sure they can provide more information if you have questions. But then they had originally shown two different options, but staff has recommended keeping it at the streetscape, which is recommended in our downtown plan, rather than moving it back onto the property for the replacement tree. And so that's what's before you today. This is just a picture of that, we called it partially dead tree, I'm not sure what stage of, of death or dying it's in, but again, the applicant had provided information from a landscape company that indicated that it was best for the health of that tree to be removed, even though it's, it's not fully dead yet.
So the picture, with that picture, where's the new tree going? There you go. It's, yeah, you got it.
Yep, there you go, right there. And this is looking from, Abe is behind us in this picture on the left. Staff does recommend approval with two conditions, to ensure that it doesn't create any traffic problems and those sorts of things, and to ensure that the tree is installed appropriately. We've included in the resolution a requirement that it be approved by operations as well as planning to ensure that it meets everything that's, that's required of them.
Well, you say the final tree selection you'll be working with them on, but I think we as a council need to understand the size of tree because we don't want a little sapling put in the ground that's replacing a larger tree and considering the other trees are full grown adult, I guess you call them adult trees or mature trees is probably the correct word. So I want to make sure we work to ensure the right size of tree and not just a little something that's put out there.
And we can work with them to ensure that it's, well, what we would probably do, like you looked on the, on the case a couple of weeks ago or a couple of months ago, using the standard that is in the Chadburn Street project, not necessarily for the type of tree since this is a different location, but in terms of the minimum planting size, we can refer to that.
Questions? Yes?
In the background, it does reference that there would be an eight to ten-foot Chinese pistachio tree.
I see, I remember the Chinese pistachio, I didn't remember the, the size, yeah, thank you for clarifying that.
Get in the plant.
Thank you. Uh, Harry?
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't believe that is, I don't believe we included that as a requirement, but we can add that to the resolution if that's your motion to make that eight to ten-foot tree the requirement for planting.
All right, I'm going to have, Harry has a comment or question?
Yes, you do. Unfortunately, this is probably not the only time that we're going to talk about tree removals. The storm a year ago took toll on many trees in this community, so there's a possibility we'll, we'll see other ones that will need to be taken out, especially once the spring growth comes on and, and we, we see that some of these trees are not going to make it. So anyway, move to approve is presented.
I want that corrected, that moved with the addition of an eight to ten-foot tree added to the requirements, please. Okay. All right, second by Lucy. Any public comment? That was...
That's okay.
Oh, Karen, thank you. And a second by Karen. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of the motion on the floor to approve as presented with the addition of it making it an eight to ten-foot tree. With that, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes seven zero. All right, we will move to the item E, First Reading And Public Hearing On An Ordnance For Z Two Two Dash Oh Three To Rezone A Property From The Two-Family Residential Zoning District To The Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District Being Point Two Three Acres Located At One Oh Three And One Oh Seven West Fourteenth Street On Appeal From A Denial Recommended By The Planning Commission. And John, you're on.
Thank you. As you mentioned, this is a rezoning from residential to neighborhood commercial. As you noted also, this is on appeal from the planning commission and so their recommendation of denial does mean that this will require a super majority vote, so six of the seven of you would need to approve to overrule the planning commission's recommendation for denial. You can see here in this, this map, it shows fairly well part of the reason for the planning commission's recommendation for denial. You can see it's, it's kind of in the middle of the yellow, which is neighborhood, as well as the, the RS two single, or two-family zoning. And there's another map here in just a minute I'll get to, but it shows some of the commercial nearby. But this is the notification area. We did send out the notices to the surrounding properties within two hundred feet. You can see here we did receive one in opposition, although that one is the immediate next-door neighbor. But then you can see a number of other properties in the area have responded in favor of this request. We have noted the difference, some of the responses came from owners of those properties, but many of the responses also came from renters, and so we made that distinction here. Just a few pictures of the area. This church was built recently. They did get a special approval a couple of years ago, I think in 2019, to construct the church. Conditional use is required to construct a church in a residential neighborhood. That was approved. Now they're wanting to, it's, it's still going to be a church, but they're also wanting to add a coffee shop. And we've had the question come up, you know, many churches have coffee shops within them to serve their, their congregants, but we make a distinction basically in our zoning that if, if it's being served to the people in the church and it's, you know, on Sundays, Wednesday nights, or when services are occurring, then that's really an accessory part of the church use. But in this case, they're wanting to go beyond that as a full retail coffee shop that would be open, you know, more than just times when the church is, is having services. That's what pushes it into the retail category that prompts the need for a rezoning if they are to do that. And you can see from these pictures that most of the immediately adjacent uses are existing single-family homes, although they are about a block from Chadburn Street. The Hidalgo's Restaurant is right there, just a block away. I think that's part of the applicant's argument for this is that it is a, it's very close to commercial areas. This is looking from the property and this is literally not even a block away. There's a funeral home and another church, and so I think the point there is that it's, it's not all entirely residential, there are some non-residential uses. This is a little bit larger zoom out of that area and you can see the, the Chadburn Corridor as well as the Bryant Commercial Corridor. This is a residential area kind of sandwiched between those two major commercial areas. And so really the question before you is, is this commercial kind of right there in the middle of that residential area, okay? I'll point out a couple of things that staff thought about because we did recommend approval of this. Number one, it's already a non-residential building, the church, but it is a small property. Neighborhood commercial, that zoning, neighborhood's in the name, it's intended to be compatible with neighborhood development. Often we see neighborhood commercial sort of at the edge of a neighborhood, but there's really nothing that says it can't be in the middle of the neighborhood if that's appropriate for the particular location. The, the second thing is that it's a fairly small property. So some of the things that you can do in neighborhood commercial, like maybe a gas station, convenience store, this property is just too small to have that. So many of the things that neighbors might object to having commercial in their neighborhood would not be possible on such a small site and such a small building. So those were a couple of the factors that staff looked at in terms of recommending approval. And also Fourteenth Street is a collector and so it has more traffic than maybe a typical local residential street. So again, that, those were the things that, the reason staff recommended approval. Again, this does come to you with a recommendation for denial from the planning commission and their thought was this really is too central to the neighborhood to let commercial encroach into the middle of the neighborhood like that. I've, I've kind of gone through the staff rationale already, so I'll, I'll pass over that slide and as well as the planning commission's recommendation. Come back to that if you have questions. But again, staff did recommend approval of this to the planning commission, but the planning commission did vote to deny it and that was a five-one vote. And so, as I noted earlier, this does require a three-quarters majority vote for you to approve. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do I have questions from City Council? Harry?
Going to take some direction from Lucy since this is her district, but I will have to make this comment. I'm not a coffee drinker, but you go by any coffee shop in San Angelo and there are vehicles out in the street trying to get in to get coffee. So my question here is we're in a residential area and realizing the place is very small, are we going to have people that are coming down that street looking specifically for that coffee shop and overloaded, that coffee shop being overloaded? I mean, I, I'm really having trouble putting a coffee shop in the middle of a neighborhood. Having said that, I'll still take some direction from Lucy.
Lucy?
Well, as far as I'm concerned, when I was looking at it, I was going by what we've always done and that's support small businesses. This is a small business. It is in a residential area, but for me, I don't see cars coming in like we see on Knickerbocker stuff. I think this is a small coffee shop where people are going to go in and sit, and it's mainly going to be a neighborhood coffee shop. So I, from my point of view, it's that I would support it because I think that the neighborhood would benefit from it.
Tom, go ahead.
Are they going to pay property tax? Are they going to pay sales tax? Is the way commercial businesses should?
Yes, well, the short answer is, I, it gets complicated because it is a church, but I think, I may defer to, to legal staff on this, but I believe the portion of the building that would be used for a retail use would likely be taxable and so there would be some property taxes potentially on that. But that's kind of over my head in terms of how that all works out in a building like that that's, has multiple uses, but in a church.
The dovetail with Tom...
Karen, if you could please ask to speak.
May I speak, please?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry, thank you. I did not find evidence of either property on the city appraisal district tax rolls at all. They're, they don't exist. I'm curious about that.
It's a church, so it's not, it won't be on the tax...
The church across the street was on the roll.
Yeah, sometimes the, that was only built in the last couple of years and frankly, the appraisal district, something like this that's non-taxable, it, it's not at the top of their priority list to get that coded into their system. So my guess is that's the situation since it's not taxable. It will at some point show up on their records in the future. It should.
May I continue?
Yes, please.
I, I took a careful look at this because of my background, I was particularly curious about this and of course I, I want to support small business and, and I applaud that almost unilaterally. However, I did notice that all the immediate neighbors, the residential neighbors, both across the street beside this property are quite handsome and well-cared-for and recently, recently upgraded, if you will. And I also read the comments that came in and there's some misunderstanding, it appears to be, from the comments. People were uncertain whether or not it was a concession inside the church or whether or not it was a business to serve the community. And I believe one of the nearest neighbors was, was quite unhappy with the prospect of a business being next door to his, I think, recently-built or recently-rehabbed residential property. I would argue that churches are not exempt from zoning ordinances and that this looks like spot zoning to me.
Yes, Larry?
I know this is a small property, but the concern I have is if council recommends this, does this open a door for other commercial ventures on this property?
I think that's a good comment, particularly as a big picture, because I think, once you open the door for one, then the next one comes up, and then the next one comes up, and at some point, our neighborhoods disappear. John?
Yeah, there are two issues there. One is, what could happen on this property? So there's no guarantee that the church is going to be there forever, and by approving the commercial zoning, you're approving anything that's allowed in that neighborhood commercial. As I mentioned earlier, the neighborhood commercial district is intended to be more friendly and compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, so there is that. But yeah, you're not approving a coffee shop in a church. You're approving commercial zoning that could allow any of those other uses. It could become an office, it could become, you know, any sort of retail. So yeah, you have to look at that issue for sure, as part of your consideration. Also, there is the issue of, well, okay, what if the next-door neighbor then comes in for commercial zoning? How do you tell him no versus having just approved this? And do you make that whole street a commercial corridor? There are legitimate reasons for you to deny additional commercial zoning in that area, but it does start to raise some questions. And in terms of what I would call illegal spot zoning, I don't believe that's a concern here. Again, because of our comprehensive plan, does talk about specifically neighborhood commercial being allowed and encouraged in appropriate locations within or adjacent to neighborhoods. And so I think you could, given that this is a non-residential use of the property already, it's not unreasonable to approve a commercial use. Again, there's plenty of reasons to deny it as well, so either one of those decisions, I think, are legitimate and reasonable.
Tommy?
Are the proponents here?
They are.
I believe they are, yes.
Okay, I have some questions for them, but John first, still for you. Was a planned development discussed on this particular tract?
Well, it was. Under our current ordinance, planned developments have to be a minimum size of one acre, which this does not meet. And so that would not allow that.
So zoning is the only way to get, if, assuming that it did pass, zoning is the only way to get the allowed use, requested use allowed?
Yeah, this is the lowest-intensity answer for being able to allow them what they want to do.
Okay, okay. And then I may have a couple of questions for the proponents.
Yes, go ahead, Tommy.
I'll go.
Would you like to come forward to the microphone, please? And go ahead and introduce yourselves, please.
Good morning. My name is Edward Gonzalez, and this is my wife Linda, and we're the owners of the property at 103 West 14th.
Couple of questions. In the information you all brought this morning, do I notice your residence is across the street from this? Is that what I noticed?
Yes, we own, there's 10 lots on this block, and we are the owners of five of those lots. We own half the block.
Okay. What do y'all see, or what would be your plan for the hours of operation and days of the week?
Limited hours, three, possibly four days a week. And also, we will be paying sales tax, and we are not a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We do pay property taxes. The reason it's probably not reflecting on the tax roll is because we just completed this in January after a two-year, four-month renovation process.
Okay, okay.
And I'd like to take the time to read, in the interest of time, I prepared a short letter with some key points that I'd like to read, and we would welcome any questions at the end, if we may.
Please.
And I'm not sure if y'all can hear me. Approximately two years and four months ago, we were approved for a conditional use as a church ministry. We bought the land, moved a building onto the land, and began extensive renovations. Then, a very short time later, COVID hit, and not only affected the lives of people, but also the livelihood of the people. A lot of businesses had to close their doors, and churches were no exemption. Most churches lost 90% of their congregants and are still trying to keep their doors open. Lack of attendance is partly due to services streaming on social media instead of in-person attendance. Some churches have had to close their doors and sell their building. As of last week, there were eight churches on the market in this area alone. We continue to move forward, but it hasn't been without its challenges. Prices on building materials and everything else have skyrocketed, not to mention the shortage on building materials and supplies. We have had to travel to Midland, excuse me, Odessa, Abilene, and Dallas just to get the needed supplies to complete this project. We have complied with all the commercial codes required by the city planning. We are seeking approval for a coffee shop inside our ministry building. We don't want to be another ministry that has to close their doors. We're not looking to be a McDonald's or Starbucks. This will be on a small scale. There will be no gas pumps or anything of that nature. Our building is on a corner lot with a six-foot security fence around three sides. Paved parking is set in 25 to 30 feet inside of the property, which is a plus. This street is a wide street with a bike run on both sides. This coffee shop will not change the dynamics of the neighborhood, as 14th Street is a very busy throughway. This is not your typical tranquil neighborhood by any stretch of the imagination. There's heavy traffic on 14th Street, because it's the cross-through street between North Bryant and North Chadburn by police, fire, ambulance, and commercial vehicles, to include city trucks, SAE/ISD vehicles, 18-wheelers, front-end loaders, material haulers, and funeral processions. One of our neighbors said it best when they emailed a letter to the city planning department in favor of this zone change, stating, "We live among a funeral home, pawn shop, hotel, chicken place, Mexican restaurant, muffler shop, and so much more." Our building is half a block away from MLK and one block north, from North Chadburn. There are 13 businesses that surround our ministry building. To be more specific, there are four houses that separate our building and the Hidalgo's Restaurant and Palmer Feed, two houses that separate our building and the funeral home, and three houses that separate our building and the next church building. We are also located next to a triplex. There are limited houses, so will not be a big impact on our neighbors. We live across the street from our ministry building. In fact, there are 10 lots in this block where the building is located. We own five of the 10 lots, which is half the block. Recently, in November of 2018, a church by the name of Second Baptist Church, located at 530 West Avenue T, requested a zone change to neighborhood commercial. This church is located in an all-residential neighborhood. There are no businesses near or around this church, yet the request for a neighborhood commercial zone change was approved. We have included three photos of this church in your packet. One last thing. All the utilities in this building are commercial, which means we are paying higher commercial rates, without the benefit of using the building as commercial. We are respectfully requesting a zone change to neighborhood commercial. We hope the photos we've supplied to the city council will give you a better visual. Thank you.
Comments?
I just wanted to make a comment. First of all, we're not related, so if anybody's watching.
Yeah, sure.
And second of all, I think you specifically hit a lot of key points, and the other one was that it's going to be a small coffee shop for the neighborhood.
Define "small."
Well, in our ministry, we have three congregants. There's not a lot of people. If we don't get approved for this, we're going to have to close our doors as well. Small would be, we're not really big, my husband's a coffee drinker. I'm not really a coffee drinker. But ministry and coffee seem to go hand in hand. So it would be, hopefully, the neighbors. Neighbors and maybe we'll get, we do have elderly, elderly that like to go and sit in a coffee shop and talk. What makes us different is that ours is, it's Christian-based. We have put a TV in the corner in your packets, and we'll maybe show a Christian movie and/or be playing Christian music. The neighborhood that we live in is not the best neighborhood. There are a lot of things that go on in that neighborhood. And since we have started this building there, people have started fixing up their houses. Neighbors have taken more of an interest in each other and taking care of each other. And that's why we feel that bringing a coffee shop to this would benefit everybody, because realistically, there's not a lot of people that want to get up and go to church for fear of COVID. But people will get out and go to a coffee shop or go to a restaurant.
And we've been, I'm sorry, we've been in the neighborhood for about 10 years. So we live in the neighborhood. We're not trying, we're not building something and leaving the neighborhood. We live right across the property. And since we've been there, we've improved. Wish you could have seen how the neighborhood looked like before we got there. But since we've purchased the lots in that area, we've, it's been, it's, the improvements have been drastic. And we've seen, as we've improved the property, our neighbors have improved their properties, too. So I think one of the council members mentioned how well the properties do look in that area.
Yes, and thank you.
Of the letters of support, John, for this project, how many of them are the, are letters from you who own five of the properties of the 10?
Actually, I might defer to the applicants to point out which of those, which of those they own on that map.
The, let's see, we're right here in these two lots here. That's our property. I don't know if I'm doing this correctly or not. But the neighbors on either side of our property, they're were, they're in support. And I would say the other ones are on 13th Street, which is be south of 14th. And I'm not too sure about the other ones, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of empty lots there, too. And I think those were the ones, the owners that, you know, supported the proposal, too.
So show me again the lots you own.
These, this right here, this area, and this one, these three lots here, and then the proposed area is two lots, these two.
So those properties don't have a green star by them? So you didn't write letters of support for your project?
I didn't know we could.
I didn't know we were allowed to do that.
Good answer.
I need to add five more in favor.
So you can add five to that.
Yes.
That's what we needed to know. Are there further questions? Yes, please, Tom.
So if you, if you're going to make a coffee shop, I'm in a coffee shop, you don't want it to be small. I mean, you're going to have to generate revenue. Any church, I mean, you can provide coffee. I get it. You know, we get why you're trying to get them there. But, you know, when I look at this, 14th is busy. I mean, you've got Palmer Feed, you've got Eliana's, you've got the Baymont, you've got everything. 14's a pretty busy street. From a commercial opinion, you, when you say you want a small coffee shop, I mean, if you can only make five bucks a day, is it really something? And as y'all referenced, you're already bringing something back that we did across town on T that's coming back to haunt us because of a zoning and a commercial here. So, you know, I look at this, and you're, I see what you're trying to do, and I see where you're trying to go with it and what you're trying to do. But you want it to be big. I mean, you don't want to have a small coffee shop, and you want to draw people in. So I kind of see a little bit of conflict of what we're saying and communicating here. And looking at your parking, you're already channeled down into a funnel, basically an hourglass to get in and park, much like at Eliana's Barita. I mean, it's going to be tough to get in and out. So, you know, I look at that, do you want it, I mean, how many people a day do you think you'll serve?
Well, we plan on limiting that, just because of the hours of operation and the days of the week. We only plan to stay open, you know, three to, three to four days, maybe just three days out of the week. And then limited hours, I'd say from six to, from six in the morning, seven in the morning, till about maybe one or two o'clock in the afternoon.
John, is it, to add to that, because I think Tom's on to something, I mean, the amount of revenue is questionable, that you will change the dynamics of the ministry in itself. There would be no reason why someone couldn't serve coffee and ask for a $5 donation, and it then wouldn't be a commercial business, right?
Obviously, there's, there's a gray area there where you cross from one to the other.
Reason we're bringing it up, because gray always gets us in trouble.
Yeah. So if it's clearly a part of the church, and it's, it's coffee that's sold or by donation to people attending a church service or attending church events, then it's clearly part of the church. If it's, the closer you get to being open to the public, and people just off the street can come in, buy coffee and leave, or through a drive-thru, you know, get their coffee, then it starts to look more like the retail. So it really depends on the operational characteristics of each individual use. But the way they've described what they're proposing to staff, it looks like it's crossing into that retail category, and is not just serving church, you know, church folks.
Because then the next question is, what part of the real estate has a wall up that says this is commercial, and then this is the church? Because if you're sharing that common land, square footage, what's commercial and what is church?
Well, the way we would look at that from, when we look at like building codes and those sorts of things, we define the area within the building that is used primarily for worship services, the area of the building primarily used for retail. And so presumably, they would have, you know, a room or the kitchen that is, you know, where the coffee is prepared, and where the drive-thru window is located, and where the seating for people are. That would be the retail part, and then the, you know, the worship area, the chapel or whatever would be the church part. And yeah, there's going to be some overlap, probably.
Because of photographs, and looking, quote, at a small building, and I see the photographs, I don't see where the church is. All I see is how big the coffee shop is.
As it relates to zoning, you would be approving the whole property. So they could make any part of that building a coffee shop. They could close the church, make the whole thing a coffee shop. And so this gives them that ability to do that. From, again, there may be some issues from how it's taxed, or, you know, building code kinds of issues. But from a zoning perspective, to us, it doesn't really matter what part of the building is which. It's just allowed if you approve this, and if you don't approve it, then it's not allowed in any part of the building.
Because my concern is, okay, so it gets approved, and then the church isn't financially stable, then anybody can come in and put any business in they want if they sell the building.
That's correct, as long as it's one of those uses allowed in that neighborhood commercial district.
Yes.
I, you and I are in the same wavelength. I wanted to remind everybody that you're not approving a coffee shop today. You are approving a designation and zoning that can allow other uses besides coffee shop. And this issue of spot zoning's come up a couple of times, and just as an instructional thing, there's case law that defines what that is. You know, there's like a series of seven tests that you go through. Those are the same seven things that our staff recommends, or reviews, and that's in your memo from staff in your packet, addressing those factors determining the appropriateness of any zoning. So as you're looking through these, your packets, there is information in there that addresses the issue of spot zoning based on the case law.
Okay, further questions, comments?
I'd like to make a comment. We had a building, a church, before this one, at this location, and we used to serve coffee to our congregants, and we put a jar out there, and in three years, we got $21. I remember reporting that on our taxes, that we only got $21. So asking for, you know, donations for coffee, it doesn't work. And I really didn't want to bring this up, but I think it bears saying, not, not to make anybody look bad, we love John James, he's been very supportive. But about four months ago, we went and spoke with another city employee in the planning department, and we asked to get a zone change, because of everything that was going on. People weren't going to come to church, there was a big scare, and we asked to get a zone change. And he said, we already were neighborhood commercial. He suggested the coffee shop. And he said, you know, like Paul Land and these other ones, that suggestion came from him. And so I said, you know, me and my husband need to talk about it. We talked about it, and we thought, you know what, we could do this. So we cashed in our retirement and took out yet another loan four months ago, and proceeded with this building, only to find out in January that we were not approved, and here we are today. Now, it is going to be limited days, because we do own a heating and air conditioning company. So that's why we know that it'll be limited. But had we not been told that, we would not, had we not been misinformed with that information, we wouldn't have proceeded this far.
I think the question mark is, the financial stability of a church is based off of numbers of people in the congregation, not establishing a secondary business within that facility to give a strong foundation for success of the church. And so, are there any other questions or comments? All right. Then I want to make sure that the motion, or lack of emotion, or changes to a motion- Then I want to make sure that the motion or lack of a motion or changes to a motion... What we are doing today is to vote... Because the planning department, Planning Commission, denied approval. Today, you're requesting a vote to do what?
To either uphold the Planning Commission's denial or to overturn the Planning Commission and approve the request.
All right. Is there a motion on the floor?
I move to approve.
Uphold the...
No, I'm sorry. No, not to uphold, but the... Not for the denial, for what they're wanting.
To overturn the denial.
Overturn the denial.
Is there a second? Any further public comment? All right, I'm gonna take an individual vote. Do each... If you vote yea, you are voting to deny this.
You would be voting to overturn the Planning Commission's denial if you vote aye.
If you vote no, you support the Planning Commission.
Correct.
Larry?
Yeah. If you vote aye, you're over... You're voting to overturn the Planning Commission's denial. If you vote nay, then you are voting in support of the Planning Commission's denial.
Karen?
Nay.
Lucy?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Okay, and I'm voting nay. So that would be a four nay and a three yea. Did I count correctly? Thank you for being here today.
Thank you for your time.
Next item is F, Public Hearing and First Reading of An Ordnance Annexing Into the City of San Angelo by Petition of the Property Owner and Unaddressed 9.278-Acre Track of Land Out of the Deaf and Dumb Asylums Lands Survey Number Two, Abstract Number 8211, Tom Green County, Texas, Located Southwest of Sherwood Way and FM 2288 Along the Southward Extension of Appaloosa Trail. John, you're on.
Thank you. You accepted a petition for this a couple of months ago. This is a proposed annexation. This is Highway 67. On the north is a screen there. This is the Boulevard Apartments out at the edge of town. And so this in red here is the proposed annexation, which is what's before you today. And I should note that this presentation includes the zoning item, which is the next one. So I don't know if we want to read that one in as well.
Okay, so let me go on to item G. First reading and public hearing of an ordinance for Z22-01, A Request to Zone a Property to the Low-Rise Multi-Family Zoning District in Connection with an Annexation Being 9.27 Acres, Located at the Southwest Extension of Appaloosa Trail, Southwest of Sherwood Way and FM 2288.
Thank you. So this is... You can see the zone... Or the future land use for the area's neighborhood. There is no current zoning because it's outside the city limits. So as part of the annexation, this is a zoning case to actually establish zoning on the property. And the applicants for the annexation have requested the RM1 zoning for apartments. This is just a survey of that property. So as I mentioned, on December 7th, you all accepted the petition for annexation, which really just means it kicks off the process to begin all of the work that has to be done for annexation. The zoning... The Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended the rezoning, as discussed, for the apartment zoning. And then, of course, today is the first reading and public hearing on the annexation as well as the zoning. And then on March 1st will be the final reading of both. So if you approve it, both the annexation and the zoning will go into effect on that second reading on March 1st. So again, you can see the notification area as normal. We notify everyone within 200 feet. In this case, it's only a handful of owners because of the large properties out there. But we... So we sent five notices, one in support from the owner. No other responses from the other properties. This is just a look... Appaloosa Trail comes off of Highway 67 and basically dead ends. But this... Part of this will be the extension of that on. And you'll see a little bit more about that on the thoroughfare plan amendment in a few minutes. And there's the end of the property. But it's, again, it's been designed as a continuation of that street as future development occurs in that direction. So again, the RM1 zoning is compatible with the plans for that area as neighborhood future land use. We believe it's compatible. It's... It would be new apartments adjacent to existing apartments right close to the highway there. And as we know, the housing study that was done a couple of years ago did identify a need for more multifamily housing in the city. And we believe this is an appropriate location for that. So staff does recommend approval of both the annexation and the rezoning. Or it's not a rezoning, it's a zoning. And the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the zoning as well. The Planning Commission doesn't have to see an annexation. We presented that to them just for their information, and they were supportive. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions, comments, issues? With none, may I have a motion for approval of... Do I need to do F and G separate, or I can combine them?
Let's go ahead and do them separately.
Okay. We'll start with a motion to approve item F. By Tommy, seconded by Tom, I think. I can't hear out this ear. Okay, so with that, any public comment on item F and the motion on the table? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, item F has been approved, seven to zero. We will now move to item G. May I have a motion for approval of item G?
So moved.
So moved by Tommy, seconded by Harry. Any public comment on item G? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All in favor of approving item G, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? With no nays, motion is approved, seven to zero. We will now move into item H. Consider Amending the Master Thoroughfare Plan to Realign Future Artillery and Collector Streets Located Southwest of Sherwood Way and FM 2288, Including Twin Mountain Drive, Pinion Ridge Drive, and Appaloosa Trail. John?
Thank you. Again, John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. This is related somewhat to that annexation. This map here shows the existing thoroughfares, which are the major streets planned for these undeveloped areas. And this is just an amendment to that. I won't read through all of this, but basically, the comprehensive plan has an element that is the thoroughfare plan, which identifies where future streets should be located. Everything from major arterials, which are the biggest streets, to collector streets, which are the more minor streets. It does not address local streets, which are all the other individual streets that aren't the major thoroughfares. We periodically review this, and based on conversations with three different developers of land in this area, including the apartment complex that we just talked about, we've noted some need for some changes to the thoroughfares in that area. So you can see here, this is that Appaloosa that exists. And right now, if you saw on that other map, what it looks like is something like that. And so Appaloosa would basically just curve and turn into Pinion Ridge. Based on the development plans of the developers in that area, what we're now proposing is for Appaloosa to continue straight and for Pinion Ridge to continue and not only tee into Appaloosa, but then continue on over to what will ultimately be an extension of Twin Mountain Drive.
Is any of that Twin Mountain Drive as shown here done?
No, that is all future, future plans. One of the things that we did, Twin Mountain Drive, on the current plan is something more like that. Given some topography and other issues, we realized that that... Putting the road through there would be much more expensive. So we've moved it around to be more like that, just to avoid those topographical issues. Again, just a reminder, these thoroughfare plans are all very conceptual. So the line on the map doesn't mean that's exactly where the future street will be. As part of the design and engineering process, the actual locations of those get, you know, basically put on the ground. And similarly with these roads, those will get built as those developers build their individual subdivisions. And so those roads could shift around a little bit, and that's anticipated. This is really just a way to ensure that the overall connectivity of the community occurs. So if, for example, this developer here decides not to extend that road through, all of a sudden, there's not connectivity. And you could be shutting off large areas of development from getting back to and, you know, over to Sherwood Way. And so, again, the thoroughfare plan is to ensure that interconnectivity of the major roads throughout the city. We have shown Appaloosa continuing across the railroad track to connect into Twin Mountain. That may or may not happen. That involves a lot of coordination with the railroad. We want to show it on the map just as a possibility. Because if we can make it happen, it would be a good idea. But in the long term, Appaloosa could end at this street. And, you know, it comes in like that, and it may not cross the railroad tracks. So... But again, in terms of long-range future planning, we want to keep that in as a possibility. I think that's everything, unless you have any questions. Again, this is recommended by staff, and the Planning Commission also unanimously recommended approval.
Do I have questions from council members? Moved by Tommy, seconded by Karen. And then, public comment, please? With none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of item H as presented, please tell me.
Aye.
With none opposed, it passes seven to zero. There are... That concludes the regular agenda. What I would like to ask and see if we could do... Can we go ahead and move into approving the various board nominations while... Instead of going into closed session right now? Okay. With that, item 9B is considered approving various board nominations. Civic Events Advisory Board, Norma Brauner, SMD 4 to first term, ending December 2023. Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals, Roger Julian Mayer to third term, ending February 2024. Co-City C Board, Chris Evatt, Mayor, to first full term. Derek McIntyre, SMD 1, and Joe Spano, SMD 2, to a first term, all ending February 2024. And Ruben Cibalis, SMD 4, to an unexpired term, ending February 2023. Design and Historic Review Commission, Lori Deckers, SMD 1, to a first term, ending September 2023. Fort Concho Museum Board, Colleen Haddad, SMD 3, to a first term, ending January 2024. Paul Monte Stanley, SMD 4, to an unexpired term, ending January 2023. Keeps San Angelo Beautiful, Sean Stein, Mayor Pro Tim, Alternate to an unexpired term, ending September 2022. The Planning Commission, Sam Gomez, SMD 6, to a first term, ending January 2024. Is there a motion to approve all of these as presented?
So moved.
A motion is triple-second. And with that, any public comment? With none, we will vote. All in favor of approving the board nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? With no nays, those board nominations have been approved. We will now move into closed session. Executive session under provision of Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, Subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D. Exceptions to requirement that meetings be open under the following sections. Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding 17.583 Acres, Lot 9D, Block 2, Section 9A, Red Arroyo Hills Edition, MB, Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney Regarding CCN Amendment. We are at this 10:24. Moved into executive session. Meeting back to order at 10:45 a.m. And with that, we will make the announcement. Tommy Hebert, if you would please discuss with...
May I make a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with the Millers View Dual Water Supply Corporation to amend the Certificate of Convenience and Necessity to allow the City of San Angelo to serve specific Millers View dual-water customers?
There is a motion. May I have a second, please? And a second by Lucy. Any public comment on this item? Having there be none, then we will take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? With none opposed, that motion passes seven to zero. We will move into item C. Announcements and Consideration of Future Agenda Items. Are there any? Hearing none, may I ask for a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
So moved by Tommy, seconded by Lucy. And anyone in the audience opposed? With none opposed, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. We are officially adjourned at 10:46 a.m. on this Tuesday, February the 15th.